Program. He has 20 applications currently and he's gonna, we do a quick interview process, a lot of mentoring. The interview process is more of a mentoring and learning experience for these kids. Some of them don't have any idea what to expect when they show up for an interview. So that's part of the process, why we do that. And then we'll get them onboarded and start training them how to be an explorer. And that really gives them an exposure, as the name implies, what it's like to be a firefighter. So they train with the firefighters, they learn all the firefighting skills. Once they develop some basic skills and meet some certain criteria, they can ride on the fire engine and go to calls with us. So they really get to see what it's like to be a firefighter. And it's a great tool to recruit and to, you know, show local community members that they can have a job and a career at their local fire station. So I'm excited that that's moving and getting off the ground. That leads to recruitment. So I'm sure the sheriff's captain can attest that public safety, we just can't hire enough people right now. We're doing really well here in Yucca Valley. Our two fire stations here are really well-staffed, but countywide, the whole fire district, we're still seeing a large vacancy number. So we're continuing to recruit, continuing to hire and put people through the training to get those positions filled. But again, that explorer program kinda is one piece of that, brings people in. And then the other piece is going to the local community colleges, local EMT programs, and letting those folks know what we have to offer. And we really have a great program. You can literally go from a one semester EMT class at Copper Mountain College, get a job here driving an ambulance, and then we will support these people going to paramedic school, and then they can apply to be a firefighter, and then we do our own in-house training to be a firefighter. So you can literally with one semester college, community college class, get into a career that can take you, you know, all the way to fire chief if you're really that ambitious. So that's really another thing that we really wanna focus on. And for me, being here in Yucca Valley, being local, being here, you know, since, you know, been here a lifelong resident really, it's important for me to have local people apply to these jobs and get hired here in Yucca Valley. The final thing I wanna talk about is fire season. It's been a great winter. We had a lot of, lot of rain, a lot of snow, which impacted us like you can't even imagine. And it's great for the drought, but all that green grass and beautiful flowers are gonna dry up in a couple of months, and then we're gonna have a lot of dry brush, a lot of fuel bed to carry fire. So just wanted to remind everybody to be vigilant this year, like every year, but especially this year, make sure you have your defensible space taken care of, your yard is, you know, cleaned of debris and weeds and your vegetation is trimmed and well-manicured and well-maintained. That's probably the biggest thing you can do. Really, we look at fire, wildfire awareness from two fronts, prevention and preparation. So the preparation is what we talk about with the defensible space, hardening your home, you know, making sure it's, doing what you can to get rid of any combustibles in and around your home. And then the second piece is the prevention. And just quickly note that every fire starts from a spark. So it doesn't matter what that spark is, but most fires, most wildfires are human-caused. That doesn't mean it was intentionally caused, but it was intentionally or unintentionally caused by humans. It could be as simple as, you know, powered equipment, a lawnmower, some kinda weed whacker, you know, trying to do, do your diligence to clear your weeds and then you spark a, you know, you spark a fire. So be aware of that. Or pulling a trailer and the chain is dragging, it causes sparks, catch the brush along the side of the road on fire, and it goes on and on and on. There's all sorts of things that can cause a fire. So I just wanna remind people to be cautious anytime they're working around anything that could cause a fire or a spark. So that's the prevention piece and then the preparation piece. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Chief Tuttle. That's, I mean, I love the, first, the station has some, is moving forward and with some property and a location. The one thing I had a question about was the explorer program and I guess also for spring cleaning, kind of, you know, taking care of those, those grounds around your home and stuff for fire safety. Is there a place where the community can go to get information on possibly guides? One, how to get into the program, explorer program, and then also things to do to make their home safer?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for asking that. Yeah, so all of our information is on our website at sbcfire.org. And on the upper right, there's a Quick Links button. If you click that, you can go to the area called Safety, and that will give you all the information on defensible space, getting ready for wildfire season, Ready, Set, Go, which is our kinda program to break out how you get ready for wildland season, how you get your home ready, your family. A lot of good tips and tricks on there and how to, you know, what to look for and what to do to keep your home as fire-safe as possible. And not just wildfires, but also house fires and just general home safety advice. Fire, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, all that kinda safety information is there under that tab. And then below that, further down, is the Fire Explorer tab. And so you can click on that, and there's a direct link on there that gets whoever's interested right to the application, and then it goes to our local office here. And the explorer program is for kids 14 to 18 years old. It says 14 to 20, and technically you can go to 20, but most kids, once they get to be 18, they don't wanna still be hanging out with the 14-year-olds, they'd rather go to EMT school and start down that path.
Yeah.
Yeah, really, 14 to 18 is our target age for the explorers.
And we might have that ambitious personality that someday could be the fire chief. So I think it is a good career, you know, choice for some that is a good fit. Any other comments or questions?
One other.
Yes?
Does your area encompass a Big Bear and Lake Arrowhead, that area?
Yeah, so the fire district covers Crest Forest, Lake Arrowhead, all the surrounding areas. We do not cover the Big Bear City or Big Bear Lake.
Did you have a lot of responsibility in helping to rescue and
Yes, yeah.
Provide safety things for all the people that got snowed in up there?
We had a major incident going up there
Oh, yeah.
For three weeks. We had, we had, it was like a major wildland fire. We had a full incident management team, you know, probably 500 or more firefighters on-scene helping us. We were responding to structured fires with snow cats. So all of our fire stations in the mountains have snow cats for rescue purposes in the winter. And the roads were so inundated that we couldn't get fire engines or ambulances to any of our calls. So the crews were running snow cats, to medical aids, to fires. And yeah, the communities were shut down for at least a week, probably more like 10 days before there was really good access in and out.
We know it took a lot of effort and you guys came through, did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public like to have any questions for Chief Tuttle online? Seeing none, well with that, I'll say thank you very much for bringing us the update. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, well, moving on, we'll move for the, look for approval of the agenda as prepared?
I'll move approval.
A mover and?
I'll be happy to second.
Okay. Mayor Potemse.
Councilmembers Abel.
Yes.
Droz.
Yes.
Lombardo.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Dennison.
Yes. Our consent agenda is next, and all items on the consent agenda are routine matters or formal documents of previous town council instruction. Items enacted in one motion and a second without separate discussion unless a member of the town council or town staff requests dialogue on a specific item at the beginning of the meeting. Requests for public comment on the consent agenda should be filed with the town clerk. Is there anyone here that has any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll move it back to council for discussion or approval?
I would like to move that we approve, but I have to abstain from item number three, the minutes of the meeting that I was unable to attend.
Okay, the consent agenda will be items two through 10. I'll look for motion.
I'll move.
Mayor Potem move, and I'll second.
Councilmembers Abel.
Yes.
Droz.
Yes.
Lombardo.
Yes, all but three.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Dennison.
Yes. And I failed to ask if there was anyone online that had any comments. Thank you very much. Department reports, item number 11, annexed property east.
Good evening, mayor and council. The recommendation before you tonight is that the town council adopts resolution number 23-12, approving the plans and specification for the annexed property East Fence and Gates Project, Town Project Number 8953, and authorizes the town clerk to advertise and receive bids. The town recently purchased this property about a couple of years ago, and is abiding the town's public works yard and community development building. Access to these properties would be greatly beneficial for the town, as it would provide needed space for the town's public work yard, which is currently site constrained from the town's public works equipment and supplies. The project is consisting of building a CMU wall to match the existing that we have that fronting the street with couple of gates, with couple of gates, one is about 60-foot and the other one is about 40-foot gate, and the rest of the site will be fenced with chain-link fence. So the recommendation before you tonight is to approve the plans and specs and authorize the town clerk to advertise and receive bids. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions after public comments.
Thank you for that briefing. Now, you know, I was surprised, that one gate, 60 feet, it's a pretty concise gate.
Yes.
But I did read the purpose for it, so thank you for that. Any public comments on item number 11 online? Seeing none, bring it back to council for comments or questions?
Sounds like something we need to get done.
Yeah. With that, I'll go ahead and move the item, item number 11.
I'll second.
Councilmembers Abel.
Yes.
Droz.
Yes.
Lombardo.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Dennison.
Yes. That brings us to item number 12 on the agenda, annual street and drainage maintenance.
Yes, mayor and council. The recommendation before you tonight for this, is for this item, is that the town council adopts resolutions number 23-13 and 23-14, which is number one, approving the engineering report for the existing assessment districts and directing the filing of such reports with the town council, with the town clerk, and then declaring the intention to levy and collect the assessments and setting the date to conduct a public hearing at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, May 16, 2023, in the Yucca Valley Community Center, 5709029 Palms Highway, Yucca Valley, California, pursuant to California Streets and Highways Code Section 22552 and 22553, and Government Code Section 53753.5, to consider the levy of annual assessments upon a real property. The town council previously formed Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District and Street Drainage Maintenance District as a condition of private subdivision development projects approval. The assessment engineers' reports, which establishes the annual assessment in each of the districts, must be updated annually and approved by the town council following a public hearing in order to levy the annual assessments. That is concludes staff project. I will be more than happy to answer any questions following, after public comments.
All right, thank you for that update. This is something that we do annually for a lot of the developments in our area. Do we have any public comment on item number 12? Seeing none online, nothing? We'll bring it back to council for discussion?
Oh, no real discussion. Think it's, we've done it every year.
Yes.
Needs to. I make the motion that we approve the, let's see, how's the resolution go? Approve the engineering reports and declaring the intent to levy and collect the assessments of the resolution number 2313 and 2314, Annual Streets Drainage and Landscape Lighting Maintenance District.
We have a motion, looking for a second?
I will second that.
All right, thank you.
Councilmembers Abel.
Yes.
Droz.
Yes.
Lombardo.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Dennison.
Yes. Brings us to item number 13, Western Joshua Tree Conservation Act Legislation. Staff, please.
Thank you, mayor, council. You'll recollect at your meeting of April 4th, you had an extensive conversation on the Western Joshua Tree Conservation Act. Staff went through that in some detail, identifying its potential impacts on the town of Yucca Valley. We left with the council's consideration of a, basically a motion to oppose unless amended, and we had some identified amendments that the town was seeking, but we needed to do additional footwork on that. We come back to you this evening just for clarification as well as an update. Since that time, there's been some movement on the legislation. It's been identified with Assemblymember Rebecca Bauer-Kahan coming through and identifying specific amendments that her office is proposing on the Western Joshua Tree Conservation Act. In addition, there has been formal letters of support and opposition on the Western Joshua Tree Conservation Act. And interestingly, in this go-around, the letters of support and opposition, they are all over the place. They span the gamut, if you will. So, for example, the petitioner, Center for Biological Diversity, has issued a letter of support for the Western Joshua Tree Conservation Act, and I think that's important as a petitioner. I mean, it probably carries a little bit of significant weight, if you will. In addition to that, others that are supporting the legislation include the solar industry as well as some of the more significant builders in the state. Folks that are opposed to this normally might be aligned with the Center for Biological Diversity, but in this case, they are not. So you have everyone from the Sierra Club, Environment, California National Parks Conservation Association, NRDC, California Environmental Voters, and others that are in opposition. Everybody has their own reason for either supporting or opposing the legislation, and I think for consistency and clarity to our residents and when individuals come to the town and ask what's the town's position on this legislation, after consideration, I think our recommendation back to the town council is to be consistent with what the town council took in formal action on the petition that was before the California Fishing Game Commission. That petition has yet to be acted on. And in your agenda packet, on page 160, 164, maybe it's 184, let me put my glasses on.
184?
184. Mayor Schooler at the time identified the town's position, and really, it's quite simple. You'll recollect that the Department of Fish and Wildlife was charged with identifying the facts and figures and the science of whether the petition warranted listing. Through an extensive process, they identified that the science did not back up the listing petition, and so their recommendation was not to grant the petition to list as an endangered species in accordance with CISA. Since that time or subsequent to then, the, at the national level, the same finding was made, and so through the Biden administration, they too came to the same conclusion. And so our recommendation to the town council this time is that the town take a position of opposition, simply because the science doesn't warrant the petition for listing under CISA. The legislative action is simply a different way of accomplishing the same thing. So I think for consistency, it's a very simple, simple way to summarize where we stand on it. Follow the science. The science doesn't lead to listing right now. And so one other aside, as we've gone through the Western Conservation Act, should it move forward? In all practicality, the town can probably function just fine with it in place. However, it does impact your property owners, it impacts the cost to development, it impacts the cost to the resident for the use of their property, and it takes away local control. All of those things are identified in your legislative guidelines that are things that we're not supportive of. So the recommendation is to oppose the legislation, and we would communicate that to all of the effect, both to the Department of Fish and Wildlife, Fishing Game, not to the Fishing Game Commission, that's the CISA action, Department of Fish and Wildlife, and then all of the key assembly committees and key assembly members that are potentially hearing the item through the budget process. So with that, open to other questions after public comment, mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that update and briefing again on it. You know, we've had this conversation many times, and I still feel that it'd be nice to follow their, their findings, certainly. So we'll open it up right now for public comment. Anyone here tonight wanna speak on this item, item number 13, Western Joshua Tree? Seeing none online? We have nothing online. We can bring it back to the council then for any discussion or questions of staff.
You mentioned that there was an assembly member that was wanting to do some adjustments or make some modifications. Do you know what those were?
Yeah, I can summarize them for you. In general, some were minor, some were more significant. I think the more significant ones was the qualification that the Western Joshua Tree Conservation Act language would only be effective if the petition under CISA was not granted. So if it was granted under CISA, then the Western Joshua Tree Conservation Act would not be effective, and then vice versa. The way that the Conservation Act was originally drafted as a trailer bill, it didn't matter whether it was listed or not. Both could, both could move forward simultaneously, if you will. The other significant portion or criteria that has changed as we understand it is, at the end of the Western Joshua Tree Conservation Act as originally drafted, it had language in there that opened up this framework for other species that are yet unknown. The legislation amendments proposed takes that language out. So I think that's pretty significant and would be potentially beneficial. Then lastly, there were minor changes that would take some of the, would further restrict the ability for a local agency to issue permits. But quite frankly, as we read through and understand the dynamics of the, of the legislation as drafted, it's a very high likelihood that our recommendation to the town council would be to let all of that permitting activity flow through Department of Fish and Wildlife. They, they would be responsible for turning around permits as drafted within 30 days. The mitigation fees would not be any different, and so there's really not that much advantage for the town to get involved at that level. So, but those would be the significant changes that we're aware of. We would expect between now and the time that the budget is adopted, 30, 60, 90 days, that additional changes may come through. Quite frankly, we would be very surprised, given that the support letters, for example, from the petitioner are already drafted based on the existing language, that there would be opportunity for significant change or modification to the, to the language that's drafted.
No, it just boggles me.
Well, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion that we follow the recommendation provided by staff, that we receive the update regarding the proposed Western Joshua Tree Conservation Act. And I think our input, my input currently is to stand by our original recommendations as the letter that was submitted to Department of Fish and Wildlife for that, to support their own findings.
I'll second that.
Councilmembers Abel.
Yes.
Droz.
Yes.
Lombardo.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Dennison.
Last item, this is a good one, is our capital projects update. So that's item number 14.
Good evening, mayor and council members. The item before you tonight is a capital improvement projects update, and the recommendation for you tonight is that the council
Wow.
The town council receives and files the presentation of the capital projects update. And we, the first category we have is the streets. And the first project we have on the streets is Little League Pedestrian Improvement Project, which is the project is located on the Little League Drive between Palm and Sage Avenue. It consists of constructing curb, garage, sidewalks, handicap ramps, driveway, signing and striping on south side of Little League Drive and creating cul-de-sac 450 feet east of Palm Avenue. This project currently is 99% complete. The only thing that the, the striping was, was done today, the pollers will be installed on Friday. So this is considered at this point of time as a 99%, 99% complete project. The next project that we have for you, exciting one, is Onaga, and I know that most of you have driven that and see how the progress that we have there. The first patch of pavement was done last week on a Friday, and we expected the second, if the contractor finishes with all the flat work, when I'm talking about all the concrete work on the north side of Onaga, we would expect that to be paved by the last week of April. If we have asphalt available at the time. But the schedule shows that is the paving, the final paving of this project will be completely done on the first week of May. But we hoping that is they will finish with their, all their flat work now, so we can have that paved next week or the week after. The next project we have for you on the list is the undergrounding utility district, which is encountered the same thing of the first project we discussed, Little League Drive and Palm. And currently, we are, we have, we received some plans on this design. We had some comments, we sent it back to Edison, and Edison have promised that we get these plans back because of the changes that we made by the end of May. So we are hoping that this is this summer, this project to start and finish, and hopefully complete it before we start on our project for the, for the Yucca Valley, the Recreation Center, the Aquatic Center, I'm sorry. The next project we have for you here is the Old Town Parking Project, and we, today we had a community meeting about this project, and this is a piece of the project that is we are carving for, to deliver to the community. Remember, the, the project entail this, this portion here and all of this portion here that is part of the improvement, but as we identified this, this was like at the one point is about $5 million project, and we wanted to deliver something to the community now. So we are doing this project, which is in about 1.8, 1.9 million for, for that. That is, we are gonna be doing, we are currently in design. We received a lot of good comments today from our, you know, from our business owners and residents that is, you know, that is in the area, and we will be accommodating their comments in the design. So, and the rest of this site, that is, right now, we are applying for a grant application so we can deliver the rest of this, and hopefully, let's pray that we get this grant.
Very nice.
The next one is the, the State Route 62 beautification, which is one of the projects that was identified as a, as a council desire. So the project is, at this point of time, we are conceptually getting a plan from our consultant that we hired to do this. And just to remind the council and the residents that watching this, that this project is gonna be, you know, we're trying to purify the 62, but in an area that we own, which is the outer highways and, you know, that is a property that is the town have a control over, not a Caltrans, because if we involve Caltrans into this, it's a longer process, it's gonna be a longer process anyways. But, you know, we are trying to beautify some areas here and there, just to make it happen for now, as a start. And just to let the council know that is, this is one of the projects that we are applying for funds, grant funds to deliver, we will be choosing areas that is like, you know, for example, Tacoma and the 62, 247 and 62, and some other areas that is we can deliver some of the improvement now. And then build on that, hopefully in the future, we get more funding to do more work at 62. The next project we have for you is the crack seal, which is, that is, the project is, crack sealing is the first step that we do to preserve the streets, and that is will be followed by a cape seal, we call it, or a slary seal, depending, you know, the, depending at the condition of that street. So the first step is to fill these cracks, and that is happening, it will be starting in the first week of May. And that will be, I'm gonna say about a month to be completed, and then we will be coming to the council, hopefully in the next meeting, for authorization to bid to do the crack seal or the, or the chip seal, that is what we're gonna be doing to the street. The next project we have for you is The next project we have for you is Essex Park. And that is project that has been discussed in a law in a with the council and with residents, I believe, and the community services for a long time. We came up with the concept, we did bid the project. Unfortunately, we received one bid, and it's on your agenda today for rejection of the bid. So we're going to be re-bidding this project again. We will try to engage other, you know, other contractors that we that work with us before. We'll send them the plans, we'll send them the the specification, hopefully that we can get more than one bid for this project. So this is going to be, we are, we are opening the bid on this one on May seventeen of twenty twenty-three. The next one is in the pickleball courts and the sports court resourcing. And that project was awarded by by the council about a couple of months ago. We have to stop because of the weather and the rain. We cannot do that in when it's cold or when it's raining. So the contractor that is awarded this project, he'll be coming back in the first week of May to complete that project. So we're hoping that is that is will be completed by by the end of May. And, you know, the other project that we have is the senior center modernization project. We have met with, which is basically what we're trying to do, is to do some rehab on the project that on the senior center. The town did very well with the kitchen. I now is they're they're working, it's doing good. So now we were trying to like to see if we can give it like, you know, a contributory look, maybe like lighting inside, you know, other ideas we have kicked out with our consultant. We are waiting for to see, you know, the lobby area, the the offices, so modernization of that. So we are waiting, we have a consultant that engaged into this. So hopefully, we see something from him in the next few months. And we will be reporting back to the council on that one. The next one, which is what we talked about earlier, the project that is the community developing the property annex, east fencing, and that is what shows in in front of you that is where the CMU wall that is we're going to be towed facing the street. And then this is the chain link fence. I just failed to mention when I did this project before, that is this project is is financed by Measure Y. It's important to, you know, it's very important to emphasize that, but this project will be done by Measure Y. The next one we have is the Little League, you know, Little League Complex. And we do not have plans currently to do it. But one of the things that is we, when I, when I first started with the town, that is we're talking about this project is the the quality of the grass, the buildings, the parking lot. So it's a big project that is we would like to take, you know, to undertake. So we are also applying for a grant to do this work here. And the grant will be called for, like, you know, we renovate the whole grass area. Hopefully, that is something that we can maybe, you know, synthetic kind of grass and remove of the building that exists in right now, replace it with a more modern building that is can serve the community. So hopefully, that is we can get the grant so we can start on this project. Next one we have for you here is the Town Hall with Resurrection Project, which is basically that is when the library was moved to the to the new location. Now it will leave that space, so we wanted to renovate the space so we can have the staff, you know, we would like what we call it a one shop, one shop stop, which is when you come and do business for the town, we'll do it in one place. Right now, currently, you want a business license, you go to Town Hall. If you want to pull permits or you have issue with code enforcement, you go to the yard. So we wanted to try to 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 have that centralized in one place. So we will do the normalization. I believe that is Curtis and the staff will be coming back with finances on this one. We have a consultant engaged right now, and what he's doing is, at this point of time, is giving us primarily what is the the cost for the design and the cost to build. And that is we will be bringing it back to you, discussing the finances of this project, and then we will go from there. Next one we have for you is the Aquatic Center. And just to let you guys know that is, at this point of time, we are expecting the plans and the specification to be completed, ready for bidding by May. We are crossing our fingers. We still have some hurdles to to jump over with the county, but we are expecting that is the plans and the specification to be completed for us for bidding mid-May. We'll say that it's mid-May to be on the safe side. And we are right now engaging engaged with our with our project managers and our construction management team that we hired to pre-qualify contractors that did that magnitude of a projects before they bidding on this project. The after we qualify them, they will be the only contractors can bid on this project. This is a big project for the town.
Yeah.
And the, you know, the dollar value for it is very tremendous that we would like to have a reliable company that do that for us. So that is coming up, and you will be, you'll be hearing about it in the future, too. And in summary, that is from the routine to the impressive, there is a lot going on in the town of Yucca Valley at this point of time. The recommendation before you tonight that the town council receives and files the presentation of the capital projects update. And I have questions or comments after public comment.
Thank you, Alex. That's quite a workload there. But you know what? Everything on there is moving forward, and it is becoming a reality. So thank you to everyone for the hard work. Is there anyone in the public that would have any comments on this item? There's a lot there to digest, for sure. Anyone online? Oh, yes.
Rich Middlebroe, Yucca Valley. Just a comment on the Little League Drive blockage. We just had a fundraising event down at the Boys and Girls Club, and I hadn't seen that completed and everything. So it was looked kind of impressive. What I found out from some of the people that worked there is the traffic that normally would have continued down Palm and turned, no, on Little League and turned down Palm, is now going through the parking lot. And they seemed to think that was going to be an issue. And I don't know if you guys knew about that or not, so.
Oh, yes, we did discuss it with the Boys and Girls Club. We're going to come up with a solution for that, hopefully, soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, bring it back to council for any comments? No.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. And I'm glad you brought up the Little League and the Boys and Girls Club. I had the same information. So I don't know what your solution will be, but yeah, that definitely has to be a situation where we can put up a barrier or or removable barriers that can be locked so it's not used as a as a thoroughfare. It undermines the purpose. And so when I saw the original design, I definitely thought it was a cul-de-sac that would stop traffic there and so forth. And I, so I was sort of taken back that there was a some type of way of having a driveway going into the Boys and Girls Club. And but I could very much see how traffic would just go right through the parking lot over and over and over again. So that does definitely has to be remedied and fixed. The Old Town Parking Project, that's a wonderful project. We had an open house and a and a study session or a greet greeting with people. How many people attended today's open house?
I do not have an exact count, but there was a few, there was quite some people and there was some, I'm going to say maybe about like twenty-five, and then there was twelve online.
Okay, and that's wonderful. And also, I just wanted the public to be aware that we not only got feedback here in the room and had an open house, but we also had staff go out to the businesses up and down the Old Town Corridor and get feedback there. So maybe some other people didn't attend that already felt they had their voices heard. So I think that's really great of staff to really get the the input of the the businesses and the people that would be impacted in a in a positive way, we feel, by having the downtown parking project go on. That would be, you talked about grants. What type of grants are available for parking lots?
So it is not, it's the, it is the beautification of the area. It's not, it's just not for a parking lot. This this piece of property has been vacant for a long time that is have some kind of, you know, homeless encampment in it and stuff. So the Clean California Grant, which is, you know, attack these kind of things to reduce the trash, to reduce the nuisance on on properties. So we are, you know, it's just, it's not going to, it's just the parking lot. But there's also, we're going to be providing restroom that is going to be controlled, we sharing structure for people to use. So we want it at the end of the day, when the project's completed, to be a big venue for people to go around. And not only for the town of Yucca Valley residents, but for the traveling motorists that is in the sixty-two, that visiting the area very frequently, the vacationers, that they can use that, utilize it as part of the, you know, their daily thing. And then go to the park there and go to the businesses around.
And so there's funds available. We're hopeful that we'll get a portion of that through a grant program?
That's correct.
And when's the deadline for that?
Uh, next week, Friday.
And we're going to make, we're going to make that deadline?
We are, yes.
Wonderful.
We have very aggressive consultant that's working in these grants, and then hopefully we will will be submitting in time.
Okay, and is it the type of grant that's matching dollar for dollar? Or do you do you recall?
Um, it is, it depends. You know, if, you know, it's like if the area like in a diverse senses, usually you have zero matching. But for this particular project that we're talking about that we are applying for, we are doing the first visit of it, which is the one point eight million. So we trying to use that as a leverage that is our.
That we're putting dollars into it and that we would ask for assistance to help finish it off.
Correct.
And I think that's a wonderful idea to to go after the grant monies and then also to state that we're willing to put our own money into the project. It has been a blighted area before, we have had problems. Having public restrooms is a health and safety issue as well, because I know a lot of people that don't have access to a easy to a bathroom will use other ways of dealing with that. So it would be very nice for that downtown area to have a bathroom that could be monitored, kept clean, and and available to the public, as well as some shade and so forth. And I think that's also a really good point that the the one point eight or one point nine million, depending on the bid, is also very good use of the TOT tax dollars, because it's going to help some of the monies that we receive from tourism can go back into making facilities nicer for people who visit and also for residents that use the downtown area. So I think that's really good use of TOT dollars to invest into that Old Town Parking Project. So wonderful, thank you for talking about the Little League Project and how we can get that fixed. Also, you're talking about possibly going out and improving our sidewalk, schools sidewalk project by the high school, by possibly going out and trying to bring some more sidewalks to the other side of the street or improve the sidewalks we presently have on the other side?
Yes, we are.
So we're trying to bid that now, or we're going to be able to move forward with getting?
Part of that, the the north side of the, on the north side of Onaga, up to the high school, high school driveway, yes, we are doing that.
Okay. And I think that's really important, whatever that design is, that it would go from chain link fence to curb, because there's dirt on both sides of that, it's very narrow, and it drops off, plus, as we know, maintaining sidewalks and keeping them clean is a problem. So I think if we're going to redesign or put it out for bid, it needs to be the full length of or the the width of from that chain link fence all the way to the curb to to fill in all that dirt and to alleviate it. Also, that size would be comparable to the size of the sidewalk that we're putting in.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure and put it out there before we go too far down the road with the bidding process. But thank you for that report.
Couple of things. Alex, on the the fencing project, I should have asked this before, but the fencing project at the annex at the Public Works Yard, there's chain link fence around the back. Are we having cameras or or something on top of that fence for security? What what is our security?
We do not have cameras that is monitor the back of the buildings at this point of time. But, you know, the channel link fence is usually, you know, is high enough, six feet high. That's not, you cannot, you know, it's not, it's, you can jump, but it's still, you know, it's it's not easy to jump it. And then so as a security measure, we not, we're going to be storing in that area is our gravel and our sand and our, so it's to not see and, you know, and you, but we can, we can look into that.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. And then I keep hearing from people that are discovering the pickleball courts and pretty happy with them. I've heard from people that have just now discovered that we that we have those. So I expect that to grow as the weather gets better. And we need to remind ourselves that we made a sort of a two-year, we gave ourselves a two-year grace period to see how pickleball goes before we replace those courts, but it was probably not too early to to start strategizing for what we're going to do. I know we're going to have pickleball incorporated with the gymnasium, right?
That's correct.
Okay, but for outdoor pickleball, we probably need to be thinking about what what we're going to do a year and a half from now. We're we're.
We'll look at it and we'll evaluate it, maybe Essex.
Okay, these are all exciting projects. I'm really anxious to see them progress even further. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to say, one thing I really enjoy on the presentation tonight is we have a lot of projects going. Some we've talked about many, many times from here and throughout staff, but all of them, for the most part, have something to do with quality of life in our area. And I'm really happy that we got to that point. It seems like our crews, you know, staff and the crews out there are doing a great job on our roads, they're maintaining the parks we have, but it was time to bring them and refreshen them, and and they're getting that support out there. And also, the other items, safety items, the sidewalks, I very much appreciate, something I've talked about since I've been here, safe routes for the children is important to get them out of the roadways because they're getting so congested. Essex Park, I'm excited to see that one move forward. There's a lot of buzz about it over there for those that enjoy that park. The senior center, the the points that you made about the kitchen, the ability to have better and better events for the seniors there is great, and I look forward to the future improvements. I know some of those are going to be a challenge for us to get through that. And then the centralizing staff, you mentioned that, and I've always agreed with that. It's really nice when someone comes to our community and is looking for some type of support that we just send them to one place. Because as the town gets a little bit busier all the time, it's quite a journey to get from here over to community development. It's, I had to run back and forth through town a couple of times a day, and I was like, oh, man, there's a lot of tourism here. People love coming here, so it's nice, we have a lot of things going on for them. With that, this is a receive and file, so thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate it. Right now, we'll be looking back to the council again. Anyone have any future agenda items?
I'd like to suggest that maybe we get a presentation from the school district, the new superintendent at some point. I'm hearing some good things, and I'm, you know, just curious to see what his strategy is. I think that'd be a good, good presentation for us.
We've had those conversations, and we'll make that happen. Had the opportunity to meet with superintendent a couple of times, and he's, he'd be happy to join us, so we'll make that happen.
We also for future reports and so forth, I spoke to the Basin Transit Authority, our general manager there, and encouraged her to to come or or ask her if she'd be willing to come and share what's going on with transportation in the Morongo Basin. So if we could extend an invitation to her and have her come and report. By the way, a lot of people don't realize this, but the three major transit districts in San Bernardino County are now run by women. And that's the first time this ever happened. And we have a fantastic general manager at Morongo Basin or Basin Transit Authority, and she has now been there for a while. And then they just recently in San Bernardino County brought on a a general manager that's also female. So all three major agencies are now run by women, which is really amazing, because just a month ago was the month of of recognizing women and pioneers. And here in our own area, we have a fantastic CEO, and she's doing a fantastic job. So a lot of people didn't realize that that San Bernardino County is now run by some very powerful and and well-educated and and really fantastic women. So I wanted to congratulate her on that, as well as the other two general managers.
Yeah, I would look forward to that also. Anyone else, any future agenda items? All right, we'll go ahead and open it up if there's anyone here for public comments. Council takes its time to consider your comments on items in concern which are not on the agenda. When you're called to speak, state your name and community of residence. Please limit your time to three minutes or less. Inappropriate behavior which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes orderly conduct will result in your forfeiture of public comment privileges. The town council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussion on items not on the printed agenda. But it's your opportunity to speak. Anyone here to speak? Public comment time. Well, nothing? Anyone online? Nothing? Well, quiet group tonight. Okay, well, we'll just bring it back to council member comments, council. Uh, Councilmember Eagle.
Uh, do we have any word on, um, what the BRTAC is planning on doing with the yard that they've, uh, now moved out of? Uh, is there any plans that we're aware of of that? And then my second question is, any, um, I heard there was a delay in moving forward or the Travelodge rebuilding project. There seemed to have been a delay, so that was a little concerning. Do you have any updates on those?
First, it's staff's understanding that BRTAC does not own their prior site, that they were actually leasing that site. That's staff's understanding. And we've not had any inquiries from the owners of that site of any activities that they're considering. So we're not aware of any proposed activities at this point in time. Uh, the second issue was, if you can say that again?
Uh, the Travelodge, uh...
Travelodge, Travelodge submitted building plans approximately 10 days ago for rehabilitation of the 67 rooms, as well as some other internal modifications to the existing structures. They called about two hours later and said, please don't plan check that. We're not 100% sure that we, and this was the architect that called, we're not 100% sure that we have the client's most recent plans on paper. Please wait for us to get back to you, and they have not gotten back to us yet. So I don't believe there's any intention on, um, changes from that, but they wanted to make, the architect wanted to make sure that the client had signed off on everything.
Well, that's an exciting project, and talk about, uh, beautification of our community, that remodeling of that hotel that's very visible, uh, from the highway will be, will be wel, well, welcomed to the area.
So with that, I'm going to let staff slip back in line again. I kind of bypassed your line, and I'm excited to hear what you have to say.
I'm sure you are.
I am.
Captain, do you have anything this evening?
Uh, happy to report that there's no significant, uh, issues in the last couple of weeks, nor anything trending. Uh, your, your deputies are doing a great job, as well as, uh, the two detectives assigned here to Yucca Valley. One of them just, uh, landed a couple of weeks ago, put a great case together, and took somebody into custody today on a previous incident. So, uh, very happy with the performance. Uh, I am happy to share, and it might be of interest to the council, that, uh, the San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors, specifically Chair Don Rao, uh, worked with Sheriff Dykes, and on April the 8th, we were given five bodies, not just positions, but bodies for, uh, deputy sheriffs for the unincorporated areas, which obviously surrounds Yucca Valley. So although these are going to be assigned to Joshua Tree and Landers and, um, Wonder Valley and Morongo Valley, it's always great to be surrounded by additional deputy sheriff. Should an emergency happen in the town, it's going to be an all-hands-on-deck situation. So there is a field training process that we have to go through. We have several deputies going through that now, but certainly by the end of summertime, you're going to be seeing additional deputy sheriffs around Yucca Valley and driving through it as they go to their different beats. So that was very good news for us and for, really, all of the, the residents and those who visit the Morongo Basin.
Thank you, Captain. Appreciate that. We've been pushing the sheriff for a while on that, so it's great to see that come through. Uh, Deborah, Alex, Sue, anything?
Um, Mayor Denison, uh, he, uh, mentioned it, but I would like to give a shout out for our street department for all the work and all the tremendous amount of time that they did to clear the roads in the last 14, is it 14 or 15 storm that we have? They did amazing job. They did, they did very well, very good, very happy. Shout out to them. Thank you.
Shane, you have anything this evening?
Only one item tonight, Mayor and Council. Your Yucca Valley Animal Shelter, 4755 Maile and Way. We are in puppy season, and we are moving into kitten season. So, uh, for those of you that need to adopt animals and create a new forever home for them, please visit the Yucca Valley Animal Shelter. It's open Tuesday through Saturday, 12 o'clock, noon to 5:00 PM. 365-3111. Those animals need a new home. My only comment this evening.
Thank you, Shane. Uh, last comment we have for you this evening, Mayor and Council, is just a reminder, we have two positions that we're recruiting for, for one for Planning Commission and one for Revenue Measure Oversight Commission. We have a couple of applicants. Um, additional applicants are always welcome, so we encourage folks to reach out to the town clerk, submit their application by April 26th. Is that right, Leslie? Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
All right, well, thanks for slipping in there. I appreciate that. So move it over to Councilmember Dros.
Um, I just, it's very exciting, everything that's going on, obviously. But I do want to, um, give a shout out to the citizens of Yucca Valley that voted in Measure Y. That really helped with, uh, with the Old Town Project. And, um, it's nice to see those, that money going back to Old Town. And it's not just for the, um, the visitors to Yucca Valley, but that, that attracts people to Old Town and helps the businesses there. So I think it's important to point out that how much it helps the businesses in Old Town. And other than that, I hope everybody had a great Easter. It sounds like the Easter, I'm sure, I don't know if Sue's going to talk, but the Easter egg hunt, uh, sounds like it went well. But anyway, so, thank you, and have a great two weeks.
All right, thanks, and we'll move it on over to Councilmember School.
Uh, just wanted to thank Chief Tuttle for the report. It's good to hear that the fire, uh, station is, uh, making a little bit of progress and look forward to, to more from that, uh, on that front. Uh, Miracle League started in town last night, the 10th anniversary season. Captain Warwick was the umpire. Uh, Town Attorney Jex was the pitcher. Uh, there was a lot of, uh, other very important people out there, and, uh, mostly the players. There were about 35 players, uh, that participated. Um, good season. People are welcome to come out any Monday night at 6:00 and, and help as a buddy or, uh, just watch. It's just a fantastic program. Uh, so congratulations to Miracle League on that. Uh, and speaking of seasons, I did not know there was a dog season, a puppy season, or a kitten season, but that's good to know. Well, uh, coincides with baseball season, doesn't it?
Something along those lines, yes.
Okay, thank you. And, um, all the projects, uh, it's just really an exciting time for us to be, um, in Yucca Valley with all these projects. And, and to have the ability to advance these projects, uh, with Measure Y and with, uh, other, other funding that's available to us. Uh, this is, uh, this is different than it used to be, and, and it's an exciting time to be here. So, thank you.
Mayor Protan?
Want to thank, uh, Captain Tuttle for coming in. I am very anxious to see something happen with that fire station. It's been a long time in the making, and it sounds like it's getting closer. Uh, so many projects coming on, Alex, that I don't know how you have time to sit here with us. Uh, it's great to see the community growing and, um, and beautifying in so many different ways. The projects look like they're well underway in most cases, and, uh, we're looking forward to some of the other things happening that are not yet, uh, quite planned, but, uh, it's good. Uh, the new park at Essex, uh, is going to be, uh, enjoyed by all, I'm sure, when it gets there. And, um, we want to, uh, make sure that the community feels, uh, empowered to please fill out applications and become part of the Planning Commission or the Oversight Commission. It's a good opportunity to get involved in the community. And there's just... We have a community where it's easy to get involved, and we want to encourage you to. Um, Miracle League was wonderful. I went there the other night and saw Tom defend himself from those speedy little, what do they call those? Uh, blind drives, right? Almost got knocked over. That was pretty, the guys are, some of the people are very powerful. And, uh, it, it's really uplifting to go and, and cheer them on and, and be part of that. Uh, I want to commend the fire department and all the volunteers that, uh, participated in that as buddies. And, uh, Tom and, and the captain for, for, you know, making the place fun. And, and the kids are just so excited, and it's, it's nice that they get to see people from, that are in leadership positions in the community, uh, doing things out there to be part with them. And, uh, we've got a great spirit in our community. Want to keep that up. Everybody stay safe. Watch out, like, the captain was ta, uh, Fire Captain Tuttle was talking about, it's fire season. And, uh, if you see somebody, somebody doing something that might be a little risky with fire, please don't be afraid. Step in, say something. We don't want to burn our town down. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, I'd like to just first say, last night, uh, at the Miracle League game, uh, the entire area was a buzz, and we've talked about this area tonight during, uh, the meeting. And when you look at the soccer fields, the Little League fields, the Miracle League field, the upcoming Aquatic Center and all that, there was so much activity and so many kids yelling and playing and laughing and having a good time, that that is really what we talk about, the quality of life, the piece of Measure Y that is in there, besides the public safety, the streets, the infrastructure. All that's important. So the community, you're making this happen. These things are happening with your action. And, uh, the overwhelming support that we had with Measure Y from the voters, we also had the same thing happen with Measure K. And those, uh, what we projected is coming in very well, too. And, and there will be things that we will be able to start helping out in the community and creating opportunities for a better Yucca Valley. Uh, last night, we had the captain there as the umpire, and he did not call one strike. So, great, and you know...
We need to get him some glasses.
The pitcher over here, Tom, uh, I don't even think he threw a strike, so I'm not sure what's going on. But the thing is, the kids had a fantastic time, and that is the key. So it's, it was good to be there and to see, um, everybody there having a good time. I want to also say one more thing to the captain. This is just a funny story. I didn't, don't talk about it much. I have an off-road car, but it is street legal. So it's kind of, you know, big and noisy, and it's got a lot of suspension stuff, but it has backseats in it, because it's for four people. While I put my dogs in there and I'm driving around town, and, uh, one of the deputies quickly turned around and started following me until he saw the dogs hanging out the window, and I turned into the dog park, and he just waved off. He must have saw the plate. He must have saw I was doing everything right. Uh, but your deputies out there are paying attention to people being mischievous out there, but it wasn't me that day. He just thought it was. So it's really good. It's good to see the, the, the men and women out there on patrol for our community, paying attention. So good stuff. Um, and I was really glad, one of the things, and we talked about real quickly, on the beautification in our town, we talk about the corridor coming in, the presentation, how it's inviting people. A couple of these projects are right along the fringe of the highway, like the Elk Trail Project and that. Remember, we have a relationship with Caltrans, too. And Caltrans is kind of responsible for their part, and we're just going to be doing everything off the edge. We might edge into their area a little bit, I don't know, to make it clean. But that is Caltrans's area, and, uh, but when we do, uh, work out there, we are now taking care of a lot of the medians in that Caltrans area. Um, they do it regularly, and with this spring, it's probably going to be more often. Uh, so watch out when they're doing work on those roadways. Be careful, it's congested. Keep an eye up as we do these projects along the highway corridor. With that, that's it for me. Um, I just want to give an announcement that our next meeting, uh, the regular meeting of the Yucca Valley Town Council will be held on Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, right here in the Yucca Valley Community Center Room at 6:00 PM. So, uh, also one announcement, we have a closed session following this meeting today. It's a public employee performance evaluation on the town, for the town manager. And we'll be meeting in closed session and, um, that notification. And then we'll also report out of closed session, uh, any reportable action, but, and at this time, none is anticipated. Um, with that, I'll call this meeting adjourned, and we'll be moving to closed session. Okay.